Good evening and welcome to the February 24th, 2014 regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. And now, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, Board Member Sue Flynn will read the school district's mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Great. Thank you, Sue. And now, the next item on our agenda is a time where we can hear information from individuals and delegations. Is there anyone here that would, yes, that would like to speak? Okay. You know the drill with the three minutes and the cards and saying your name and your home address, so. Yes, is the green button on? Okay.
Yes, it's on now. My name is Susan Paget. I live at 153 Linwood Avenue here in Waterloo. And I'm here today speaking on behalf of the WA and a fundraiser that we participate every other year in. It's the time for the Empty Bowl fundraiser. And as you know, it's an event that we've been involved in since its beginnings. Last time we did it, we raised $15,000 for the Northeast Iowa Food Bank. And of course, you guys know the great work that they do for our students, from backpack programs to make sure kids get good food over the weekends to the summer programs. So what I'd like you to do is to consider buying a ticket for you and your significant other and coming out on April 29th. It will be at the UAW Hall, as it was last time. It's from 5:30 to 7:00. There will be silent auction as well as live auctions. If you haven't been before, you get for a $20 ticket, a great bowl made by either you and I pottery students, local woodworkers. I see a lot of nodding faces, so I know you've been. And some great soup. I have to brag a little bit on my mother because this year they're only inviting professional chefs and my mother to make soup for the event. And every dime we collect that, from ticket sales, everything goes directly to the food bank. Everything is donated. So as I said last year, last time we did it, we went from $11,000 to $15,000, and we hope to raise even more this year. Pam has agreed. She's got some tickets for me, so she will allow me to leave what I'm sure is going to be a scintillating school board meeting a little earlier. I hate to leave, but my wingman over there and I have decided we're going to go home and get ready for conferences tomorrow. But we really would appreciate your buying tickets and coming out to the event. Great food, great company.
April 29th, Sue.
April 29th. It's a Tuesday, so.
It's Tuesday, okay.
Yeah, 5:37. We'll not interfere with the school board meeting, so hope to see you all there. And no cards flashing, so I must have done okay.
Is there, is there, can I ask questions?
You bet.
Oh, is there a way to donate a ticket to a family who might not be able to come? The reason why I'm asking is because I have church on Tuesday night.
She currently, she has 10 tickets right now, and I can get her more. So you guys can, can buy as many as you'd like and bring as many people as you'd like because the soup is excellent. Panera donates bread for the event. My mother makes a really great Tuscan tomato soup, which usually goes.
That was what I was gonna ask.
She's making the Tuscan tomato and butternut squash this time, so. And then there'll be local chefs preparing. And actually, West High's culinary arts program is going to be making soup for the event, so. I was talking to Tracy today, and she was telling me about that. Okay. So any other questions?
And it benefits the Northeast Iowa Food Bank?
Yes.
And I, the numbers are astronomical. I think every dollar you raise for the food bank gets turned into.
Like seven or eight dollars of.
Dollars of food that comes back. So if you raise $15,000, it's just, it's a, it's a huge amount of food that does a lot of benefit in Cedar Valley.
Yeah, and I know the elementary schools can see the, the benefits better than we can at the high school. Kids don't really, at the high school level, talk about that. But, you know, those backpacks, I'm sure are lifesavers to families and, and knowing that at least during the school week, during the summer, they can go to their school and, and get a good breakfast and lunch. Very significant work they're doing, so.
So we have 10 here?
You have 10 there, and I, Pam, you email me and tell me how many more you need, and I will get them for you, okay? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. And Jane, thank you as well. It's a wonderful event. All right, and with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the School Board Recognition Week. And Tara Thomas is here to talk about that. Exhibit list is on Exhibit A. It's on page one of our board packet. And this year, every year, there's a School Board Recognition Week. We almost always hold it, I think, the first week in March, and that's just for this district, I think, but.
Yes, so the Iowa Association of School Boards celebrates it in May, but due to a lot of other activities at that time, our district celebrates it earlier. And we just want to take a moment to remind everybody that all of our board members, all of you, are volunteers. You're serving through committees, meetings, hours of your time to ensure that all the students in our district are getting a solid education. So we designate March 2nd through 8th as the Waterloo School Board Recognition Week. And we just want to say thank you on behalf of all the staff and students and families you're serving in the district to govern the direction of the district and the passion, the perseverance, and really, for a lot of you, the time that you're regularly putting in on behalf of the students. The theme this year, Educate, Advocate, Celebrate, is recognizing school board members as community leaders who are helping lead students to higher levels of achievement. And board members are going to be honored with a luncheon. It's March 7th, where student leaders from West High will be attending. And Tracy Holmes, if I'm saying her name, Holmes Culinary Arts Class is going to be catering that event. Schools this week are designating the week with electronic sign designation. And again, we just thank you for your service. So let me read off the names of our school board members, and Dr. Norris will do the honor of presenting a certificate. We have Mike Kenshi in the First District. Andrea Sparks, who is an at-large member. Our Board President, Mike Young, District 3. Shanley McNally, an at-large member. Sue Flynn, District 2. And in District 4, Angela Weekly. And I can say that Dr. Norris, when I came on board, said that he was fortunate that out of his career in education, this has been one of the best boards he's had the privilege of working with. So it was very reassuring for me to hear. Oh, thank you. And in his absence, our at-large member, Lyle Schmidt. Thank you, Michael, for reminding me. So I just really feel it's worth sharing that in my past, as a journalist of covering many, many school boards in different states, that it's really neat to be a part of a district where the passion, direction, and focus of the board is one that puts students first. And it's, makes my job easier as a communication person. So thank you for all that you guys do, and it's been fun to work with you.
And Tara, thank you. And also, the, the team and the, I guess, the administrators and the team that's up here from the district does a tremendous job of working with the board and making things much, much easier for the board members. And he's not here, but I was, Lyle Schmidt has the longest tenure, it may be the longest tenure ever, I think, in the Waterloo Schools, for the Waterloo, for school board members in the Waterloo Schools. I don't.
But it might be in the history of Iowa.
No.
No?
It's not, but I, I think.
Twenty-two years, I think.
Is it? Okay, that's what I was, my question was.
I think it's 22.
It's over 30. I think it's 30.
Not here.
Oh, okay.
Are you talking about in Iowa or Lyle?
Lyle.
No, I thought it was in the low twenties, but we'll have to figure that out.
He needs a special pin.
Surprise him when he gets back. Or tell him he didn't get one because it's been too long.
Exactly.
Tell him something. Give him a hard time about it, yes. Tara, thank you for that. And we have our lunch at West High, which we're all looking forward to. Last you ate at the East, it was great, and so it should be very good at West this year, and that is March 7th. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, and that is the Consent Agenda, which tonight consists of the minutes of our last regular board meeting on February 10th, and then we had a special meeting on February 12th. It also consists of personnel appointments and adjustments since our last school board meeting. And then finally, bills due and payable, and bills paid between board meetings. And are there any items from those three that the board members wish to be removed? Okay, and I don't have any to remove either, so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, and any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That then takes us to Exhibit E. And this is for, I think that was just our, actually, only vote of the meeting. It's a, we've got three policies shown. It's Exhibit E on page 16, and these are recommended policy changes that came out of the school board or school policy committee. It's three, basically amendments to existing policies, and they are support and assistance for teachers, which is Policy Number 403.2; then drug and alcohol testing program of transportation employees, which is 403.7; and then finally, personnel records, which is Policy Number 704.31. Again, these were discussed in the policy committee, and they're up for first reading. And Tara Thomas is, is chair of that committee and is here to, to discuss the policies.
So if you look at the first policy, the support and assistance for teachers, which is 403.2, the proposal is just to add and criteria, so a little word tweaking, and then that additional sentence, which defines if a teacher's job performance does not meet expectations, then the evaluating administrator would provide a formal plan of assistance to support his or her development. The other two policies are just some minor word, word changes. The first one on 403.7 being the drug and alcohol testing, adding or superintendent designee to give other individuals who supervise employees the ability to administer the forms to have those tests done. And then the personnel records, 704.31, is just moving us into the modern paperless society where electronic records are maintained versus having a lot of filing cabinets.
Tara, there was one item that we discussed, removing some administrators' names.
Yes, and none of these contained Dr. Smith's name, I don't believe. Right, those were ones that have yet to come before, you guys.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we didn't miss one.
These are policies that name an individual rather than a title.
Exactly. So he had suggested, which we agreed to strike, any personal name references to make it long-term.
Yes.
Not something you constantly go back and change over.
We went through several items, and these just haven't.
Dr. Gary Norris, now you just say superintendent.
Right. All the Norris references have been struck.
No trace of you.
How quickly that happens. Now it's her retirement, it's just.
I have a real question. Is the seven years, is that a state regulation, or is that district-specific, or?
Good question. This page to the right, Sue, references the IASB policy, and I believe, let's see. Well, it looks like.
I think, I think there are, I think there are different years, Sue, for different, so some of our financial records are a little bit different than personnel records. But I can, we can absolutely get the board to things that are required.
No, I just wondered about that.
No, that's a good question, and I.
Are you looking on page 22?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
2122. Just like for a teacher, you know, I mean, sometimes a history of more than seven years, I would think might be looked at, but I don't know. That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, and some I don't know for tax purposes that. I've got a, I know with my work, I've got a couple of examples of personnel, or record-keeping examples, and it lists, you know, personnel files are different than financial records for tax reasons and.
It'll be pretty easy to keep now that they're electronic because they don't take up any room.
Has a district had, do you have warehouses full of filing cabinets?
Yes.
Okay, where are they?
Well, right now, over McKinstry.
Oh, really? Okay.
And we just cleared Mrs. Turner's entire floor of student records as ladies scanned all the documents over the last year. You remember when we were doing the remodeling up there to make room for the work, the carols or the?
Yeah, yeah, workstations or.
The workstations. We had to get those out, and so they were all scanned and.
Okay, okay.
But they're still, like you said, they're still warehouses with boxes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Some of those can probably be eliminated, yeah.
Exactly.
Because you only had to keep them seven years for something.
Any other questions or comments? If not, again, this is for first reading. It'll be up at our next meeting in two weeks for final approval and for vote. But with that, I think we're good. Tara, thank you very much, and thanks to the committee as well for your work on this. Then that takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is an update on our financial matters. And this is Exhibit F. It's for information only. It starts on page 24, and there are a number of pages of financial information there. And Michael Coughlin is here, the district CFO, to discuss that, so now I'll turn it over to Mr. Coughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Just to review again, the reports that are provided, 25 and 26 are reports based on the cash position of the different funds as you look down, all the different categories. And then by each month, you can see the activities that, activity of the balances that are running in each of the accounts. Page 27 is a summary of the revenue on the top block and expenditures on the bottom block for the, for the general fund. These are very, for lack of a better term, general categories, salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, utilities, and equipment, and the money sent to the AEA. So through the current month of, at the end of January, we're showing revenues coming in a total of 125, five and a little extra, and we have expenses going out of 122,357,000. The majority of the accounts are basically at the halfway point because of salaries for some of the staff, the majority of the staff, starting in September. So it's not exactly halfway, but it's close, so our percentages reflect that. On page 28 is, maybe start at the bottom of that page, by what we call function, or you would probably refer to it as program area, regular instruction, special ed, and so on, as you go down on the left-hand side, the expenditures are divided into these categories. And the bottom block is the actual amounts for the 12, 13-year. So you can compare that to the budget in the middle block for 13, 14, under this different categories. So it has the program, and then they're all broken down by salary and benefits and so on as you go across to the right. And then the top block is the year-to-date expenditures for all of those different areas. You can compare to the budget and then to what we expended for last year. For page 29, these are other major funds, the management fund, PEPAL fund, and the sales tax revenue on the bottom block, and it's a, excuse me, summary of the revenues, the majority coming in from property tax. On the top two and the bottom is the sales tax revenue coming in, then also the expenditures that go along with each of those. And page 30 is the graph of cash flow as it goes through the bank accounts. So on a daily basis, it's recorded on here of how much is actually in the bank. It's not going to meet exactly with the ending balance of the cash account, the first report that you saw, because there's money that's still, or checks that are still outstanding. So this gives you a comparison of all of these reports of what's been booked as a revenue and expense, how it affects cash, and then how it affects the bank account. So all three are measured as how we see the finances going through the district for each
Excuse me. I've just got some questions about kind of going forward or what you're hearing from the legislature, and then also some questions on, with the changes with property tax reform last year, and that, and is it 10% or a 10% rollback for commercial properties? It's going into effect, is it for next year?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And is that, the state, as I understand, also set aside money to, to backfill that to?
Yes.
Cities and counties and school districts?
Yes.
Okay. So is that, as we look in budget for next year, do we, do we know what that will be? Was it, were they, they promised three years, I guess, of that?
Two years, as far as I know.
Okay.
And I think that's under consideration in the legislature this year to address that third year as it falls back onto our, into our laps. But for the first two years for the 15 budget and the 16 budget, in our particular case, it involves about $774,000 that would have not been collected because of the rollback on commercial and industrial. But the state has set aside funds to cover that.
Okay.
So we will not pay that property tax for two years, or collect that property tax for two years. It will be backfilled by the state.
But in the state makes the payments, though, do they make the same, the payment around the same time as the property tax?
Actually, I don't know that answer.
Okay. I'm just thinking of cash flow. Okay. But it's, I'm not trying to put you on the spot because it's new for basically everybody, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So the state is, because of the ed reform changes a year ago, the allowable growth, or what is now called supplemental state aid.
State aid.
The increase of that on the property tax side, because it's, it's prorated is how much is collected by property tax and state aid, the property tax portion of that will be covered by the state as well.
Okay.
So that was part of the hold harmless to raising tax rates as part of the legislative action last year. So when you look at, I think it's, it's an interesting position to review, is that even though we're getting 4% or 2 plus 2 this year and 4% next year, it's really more than that because they're covering these two components as well. So when, and I haven't heard a calculation, when the Senate has passed a 6% request, what the 4% currently calculates to by adding those two backfills. But that would be something interesting to find out of how that really compares. But it's getting more complex every single year. I don't know how they do it, but they seem to manage.
Yeah, school finance is incredibly complex.
So even with the rollbacks, and we're going to be talking about that at Finance Committee meeting tomorrow, and then in March, we will be dealing with preliminary tax rates and publishing and all of that. Even with the rollbacks, because of the backfills, if our tax askings remain relatively status quo, we're not going to see an, we're not going to see an increase in property tax because the increases have been covered by the state for these two years. So there's always, it's always a little more complicated than that, but we're not going to see a significant change because of the rollbacks, because the state is covering that.
Any other questions? And again, there's a Finance Committee meeting tomorrow, I think, meeting tomorrow afternoon for Finance at 1:00, and then discuss that. The financial aspect will be on the agenda, yeah, quite a bit more as we go through.
Yes.
Go through the process. And just real quick, Dr. Norris put it in his update on Friday, but we went with Dr. Lindeman to Des Moines on Tuesday of last week, and there's some discussion of the allowable growth or supplemental state aid being set for next year because it's set for, actually, really, two years out. The state law says it has to be set for two years out.
Within 30 days.
Within 30 days of the budget, of the budget, and it's already gone. And the Democrats in the Senate have passed 6%, and the Republicans have not, said it should just go year to year, depending on what state revenues are. And they go back and talk about the example with Governor Culver, where it was set two years out, and then the money wasn't there, so there was a 10% across-the-board cut, and that was bad, too. So we talked, I think all three of us left Des Moines thinking it hasn't been solved and is probably not going to be resolved.
Exactly.
Anytime soon, so we'll see. Maybe at the end of the legislative session, but maybe not, so don't hold your breath. Any other questions or financial information? If not, then we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Norris.
Thank you for giving my report for me. I was going to talk about.
Oh, I'm sorry. I stole your thunder there.
We did hear about the backfill because out in the halls, if you were asking the people for more revenue, they would remind you of, that the commitment was a little bigger than normal this year because of the backfill. Well, it was their choice to, to do that, but anyway, yeah. The only other thing I would add beyond what Mike said is there's quite a push on bullying legislation now. There, at one point, when I testified on the governor's bullying bill, there was a, in, mentioned in that bill was also suicide prevention, and they, the committee was asked to treat those separately, two separate bills. When we were down there, we heard the House Ed Committee talk about administrative mentoring, and we spoke with a number of legislators, so I think, I think it was a productive day. The, the only other thing I would mention on my report is on the 15th, which was a Saturday, Mike Young and I had an opportunity to attend a first robotics event at U and I. And it's really something we're excited about. We have robotics at our schools, we have elementary and middle school, but this one is something that six districts have in Iowa, Cedar Falls being. is something that six districts have in Iowa, Cedar Falls being one. And I've got some video, if any of you want to see that. I just took a little short video on my phone, and it's kind of interesting to see the teamwork, and the kids are learning, not only teamwork on their own teams, they're learning to cooperate with other teams, and so we have, we have some natural progression. We can move from, like our UNIQ folks are doing wonderful robotics there at the middle school level, and this might be a next step, so. And I know the McElroy Trust is looking at encouraging that in the district, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Norris. And just to follow up on that, I learned a lot about it, too, on Saturday. First is an acronym, and it's, it starts out, I believe, with LEGO Leagues, which there are a number of teams. And I learned a lot, because I told my three young boys that we were going to a LEGO League fair, thinking that it was LEGO League. There were, we went in, there were no Legos there at all. So LEGO League is roughly the elementary.
Yes.
Level, and there are a number of teams in the Waterloo schools, maybe a couple dozen, I don't know, but we've, I know we've heard from Kingsley before. And then there's First Tech, which is kind of the middle school level, and I think there are three teams, maybe, two in the schools, and then one with UNIQ.
Correct.
And it's not necessarily middle school, it's just kind of the middle tier.
Middle level.
And then there's First Robotics, which is generally high school students, and that is, is what, well, Dr. Norris has the video here, but it's, they build kind of larger machines that might be two or three feet square, that have tasks, tasks to do, and there, that one is, there are only six teams in the state. They do it, they need fifteen teams to hold competitions. I think, for example, they said Minnesota had like two hundred and seventeen, so they have a lot of competitions, so they're trying to expand that a little bit more. But it was very interesting, and the kids seemed to be completely engaged.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, it was impressive.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Dr. Norris. And with that, we'll hear from board members. If, now, I'm looking, anybody who wants to start?
This end?
This end? Okay, and I'll start. Information from board members, I'll start with Mike Kenzie.
I'll make it easy, I have nothing tonight.
Thank you, Mike. And Andrea Sparks.
Pass it on.
Okay, thank you. And Shanley McNally?
I just want to remind everybody that we have conferences this week. They're super important for our kids. Our staff takes a lot of time to prepare for them, you heard two of our staff say that tonight. They're Tuesday night from four to seven-thirty, and Thursday from noon to eight. It's never too late to get in and make a face-to-face contact with your child's classroom teachers and, and regular teachers, so just take time and get out there and do them. Thanks.
Thank you. And Sue Flynn.
Sorry, joke again there. Just wanted to remind everyone that we appreciate your patience with the weather, and if anyone would really thinks truly that we want to call off school, that is a fallacy. And we truly are looking at the safety of kids, and the safety of our buses, and the conditions, and the road conditions, and the temperatures, and we're doing the best job that we can. So I just wanted to applaud the administration for that. I now believe that Dr. Norris's newest hat is weatherman. So, he could be Will Ferrell Jr.
He got, he got yelled at this morning by a person.
This morning?
Yeah, this morning, saying it was too cold to have school today.
What?
I'm, I'm serious.
It was sunny and great, yeah.
So I guess, in all of that said, just have grace with the system and grace with the staff.
Yes.
And then, secondly, I wanted to congratulate the bowling teams from east and west. They are both headed to the state tournament this week on Wednesday, so I hope they show good sportsmanship, which they have all year, and roll that ball well, so they come back with trophies. So, both those teams did an awesome job, and our basketball teams are now in sub-state play, and just be a good sport, and you're representing your school and your district and your city, and so remember that. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Sue. And Angela Weekly.
And I also have nothing.
Okay. Thank you. And I just will quickly follow up on what Sue said, and thank everybody for all their efforts, Dr. Norris, Marty Metcalfe, and all the staff on Thursday and Friday, transportation especially, because it was challenging, but it, it seemed to work out well, both Thursday afternoon, and able to get the kids home safely, and then Friday, getting everything cleared off and getting school started with just a two-hour delay. So, thank you to everybody. I know it's a lot of work to do that, but it was, it worked out well, so. With that, our next board meeting is in two weeks, on Monday, March 10th, at 6:00 p.m. Hopefully, it'll finally be warmer by then. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried, we're adjourned. Thank you all.